Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll start with a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Supervisor Fountain?
Here.
Treasurer Horning?
Here.
Judge Chofu here.
Trustee Collier?
Yes.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Here.
Trustee Petrucci?
Here.
Thank you. Item number four is approval of our meeting agenda.
So moved. Second?
Motion by trustee Colani, second by treasurer Horning. Is there any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Call to the public. Anybody this evening that called to the public? Good evening.
Aye. I appreciate the chance again to address the board. My name's Wes Nakagiri. I live on Tiptico Lake Road in Heartland. And a few weeks ago, I came and spoke regarding the tax abatement for Imagine Theaters. And I had, you know, meant, you know, put my argument forward. And I wanted to share with you some additional research that, you know, put numbers on to some of the facts that I had discussed earlier. So I looked at a website called thenumbers.com. And it's one that deals with cinema issues. You know, they look at, it's a whole wide range. One of the things they talked about was ticket sales and revenue from ticket sales. So I went back to 2002, which was the peak year for ticket sales, both sales and revenue. And so from 2002 to 2016, there's been a decline in ticket sales of about 18% across the United States. And that corresponds to a similar decline in revenue, 18% across the United States. So I just wanted to share those numbers with the board as we, as you consider, you know, there's a tax abatement program for a business that arguably, in my mind, has a weak business plan. You know, they cannot get the funding without this tax abatement. And it's quite remarkable that they can't get funding in Livingston County, low tax county. I looked at the numbers. There are 77% of counties have higher property taxes than Livingston County, which is really a tribute to you guys and everybody else that's in the county to keep the tax rate low. Very competitive, good for business. In Heartland Township, in, within our county, we are on the lower half. We are on the better half in terms of, I think, 57% of municipalities in Livingston County have higher taxes than we do here in Heartland. So in this environment of low taxes and the environment of low interest rates, that Imagine Theaters cannot make a go of it without, on the, standing on their own two feet, is troubling. And then you couple that with the declining market, you know, that, on the statistics I presented, it's just, I just wanted to share that with you and ask you to consider that as you move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else this evening that called to the public? Being none, I have approval for the consent agenda, item number six.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Colani.
No.
Trustee Jermaine. Any discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Item number seven is a public hearing this evening. This is, I believe, the final step, the final action, I believe, James, of the board through quite a long process of a special assessment at Millpoint. Millpoint came to the township months ago requesting the option of a special assessment district to establish to repave their roads within their private roads. We've gone through several meetings, had a public hearing. Bob, maybe, Bob, you could maybe wrap that up just to kind of get to everywhere we are today.
Absolutely.
And you know the timeline very well. So I'm going to turn this over to...
Absolutely. As Mr. Supervisor had said, the Millpoint Homeowners Association approached the township in an effort to conduct all their surface road improvements through an assessment district. The township has, and in order to do that, the township must adopt four resolutions. To date, we have passed and adopted three of those resolutions. Tonight, following the public hearing, will be the presentation of the fourth and final resolution that will be confirming the role. And after the confirmation of the role, the township will wait 30 days for appeals. At that point, as long, pending that there are not any appeals that stop the process, the township will contract with the engineering consultant to begin this project. This project is scheduled to be constructed in the spring of 2018. However, by confirming the role this evening, if adopted, the first assessment payment would be due on this year's winter tax bill. And then the project would be designed over the wintertime, and then it will start in the spring of 2018.
It's worth noting as well that we will, once all the final costs are in, we'll take a look at what the actual cost versus the assessment role. If there are differences or savings, we would give an amendment to the assessment role at a later point.
Okay. Is there any other questions from the board right now as to where we are with the item? Thank you, Bob. At this point, I'd like to open up the public hearing. Anybody in the audience that would like to make a comment, please come forward. Do you have an opportunity?
Motion.
Entertaining a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion by trustee Colani, second by trustee Harper. So we are in our public hearing. Anybody want to speak tonight?
You gotta call a vote. Gotta call a vote.
Oh, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed nay. So it took us a while to get to the public hearing being open.
Now that we're here.
Now the public hearing is open officially.
It's still not open again.
Would anybody like to come forward now that it's officially open? Being none?
I'll make the motion close.
Entertaining a motion to close.
I'll support it.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Colani. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion, or the public hearing is closed. We do have before us this evening the confirmation of the special assessment role for Millpoint for consideration by the board.
I'll move resolution, the confirmation of special assessment role, lien, payment, and collection of special assessment.
Support.
Motion by trustee Harper, second by trustee Jermaine. Is there any other discussion? Being none, I'll have the clerk please call the roll.
Trustee Jermaine?
Yes.
Supervisor Fountain?
Yes.
Trustee Collier?
Yes.
Treasurer Horning?
Yes.
Trustee Harper?
Yes.
Judge Chofu, yes. Trustee Petrucci?
Yeah.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Mr. West? Thank you. Item number eight, pending new business, the Village Drain Project Asphalt Restoration. Manager Wickman?
I'll turn it over to Mr. West.
I'm sorry, Bob?
He can give you a quick summary.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. In an effort to ramp up the Village Drain Project, the section that was constructed through our village area, we have some asphalt repairs that are remaining. They were due to the excavation and installation of the new 24-inch storm sewer pipe. It went through one residential driveway as well as one commercial parking lot. So what you see before here is the proposal to award a contract to the lowest bidder for those asphalt repairs. If approved, these asphalt repairs would most likely start the first week of July. And again, these were from the construction project. And I do want to add, this only covers the private asphalt repairs. The public asphalt repairs will be incorporated with the Heartland Road repaving project. So this, again, is just for the private asphalt repairs required.
This is like for the skirts on people's driveways?
Uh, one driveway, we're replacing the whole driveway. They went right through it on about a 35-degree angle, so it pretty much went right through it. And what...
Is this within our contingency that was cited?
I think our contingency from the original contract, we, we went through that with the change orders.
Oh, okay.
What this does is, if this contract is approved, it brings us to a total amount for the Heartland portion of the Village Drain Project to just under $400,000. Historically, in all the cash flow models and CIP models, we have used $400,000 as our portion of this project. I do want to add the caveat of there's approximately 58 feet left to go. Once the bore under US 23 is complete, then they will tie that together in the 58 feet that we will still be responsible for. So I do believe that we will exceed the $400,000 number. Minimally, I anticipate or project it to be less than 5% over.
What was the original estimate before we had...
I believe the contractor's estimate was $331,000. But then I believe we had four major change orders. They pended from the hazardous soils when they discovered there was diesel fuel, the addition of stone, and there was, I'm sorry, the other two slipped my mind, but there were four kind of field decisions made that really that was the only way to complete the project.
Thanks.
Yep.
Any other questions for Bob?
I do also want to add, DNHS Asphalt, who is the contractor that I'm recommending the award to, was the same contractor who completed the Hero Center paving parking project.
I'll move to approve the contract with DNHS Asphalt for asphalt repairs on the Village Drain Project and authorize a 15% contingency for a total cost not to exceed $27,878.
Support.
Motion by trustee Colani, second by trustee Harper. Is there any discussion or questions? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item number 8B is the ICMA retirement adoption plans. We have had several discussions on this over the last several months, and this actually brings the closure to this, makes it official. James, anything you want to add to that?
Yeah, this would be the last action. There are three different plans in front of you. If you didn't catch that, the first plan is for all existing elected officials and employees. The second plan is for all new future hires. And third plan is for future elected officials to capture the vesting schedules that have been, we've talked about. Otherwise, the plans are intended to mirror the existing plan. This is not any sort of pension. It's just a defined contribution system. And there are a couple of things that we highlighted that are different, that you may want to discuss. One is the retirement age. Under the existing MERS plan, the defined retirement age is 60. The recommendation from ICMA for the new plans, and it would be, my recommendation would be to change that to 65. There's been some discussion about whether you'd want to change that, and I expect you would discuss that. And there's a couple of the things that I've gotten questions about, so I'm happy to answer questions or have you discuss it further.
Well, I'll start out because he's referencing the age thing. I was one that had a discussion with James about that. Changing it to, back to 60 or even 55, I, the public employees where I used to work with was 55. But here, we're not talking about a benefit, you know, like a pension.
Right.
This is access to their own money.
Their own money.
So if somebody leaves and they're 55 or 58 or whatever number we pick, it's, we're not, the impact on us is nothing, but it could be important to that person who, for whatever reason, may have to retire or want to retire, and they won't have access to their money till 65. And again, it's not like it's a pension that, you know, a guaranteed benefit. This is just a guaranteed contribution. So it's their money.
If they're all vested.
And they're all vested anyway, so why are we delaying their access to their own money?
Yeah.
I don't have, I don't agree with that.
I don't either.
I think it should be earlier.
You can roll this over anytime.
No, but he's just saying...
But what if you just want to retire?
No, I'm just saying, as an alternative, you can roll, when you leave, you can roll this over into another qualified plan that may allow you to access it sooner. But I don't have, I, where I was going with is, I agree with him. I have no problem, you know, keeping it 60 or even 55 or whatever, but there's still tax ramifications if you do withdraw.
Well, 59 and a half.
59 and a half, right. Exactly.
So 60, I think.
So that the federal, the federal...
Everybody needs to realize.
Uh huh.
And everybody needs to realize eventually that, you know, they're going to, the way Social Security is going to be is, they're going to raise that, the amount that is taxable that people are going to receive. So all these plans that we're all putting, investing in, they mean nothing anymore because the government's going to raise that, that how much you can earn outside of Social Security at a certain age.
But I think that's a more important reason to keep it low, that if people need access to their money.
Aye.
Because they can't, they have to wait for retirement till Social Security.
I don't have any problem. Whatever you guys decide.
James, you said the staff, are you recommending 65?
Yeah, we're, there's a couple of unintended consequences of lower, of having a lower age, and they're not significant. And we've talked about it. I don't lose any sleep if you make it 60. I wouldn't recommend less than 60. But if you do, if you do make the retirement age 60, if somebody reaches the age of 60 before their vesting period, they're automatically vested. So there is a small potential that you hire somebody who, you get shortchanged on the vesting. It is what it is. And then there is not necessarily, it's a disincentive to continue employment in some regards, that if you keep, these are small things. In my world, if you ask me to choose, I'd say 65. If you choose 60, so be it.
I like 60.
I like 60. It's just, you know, if an employee wants to leave, James and I had a discussion, and they feel forced to stay till they're 65, what kind of employee are you keeping?
Right.
A disgruntled one, you know, that can't leave, that wants to leave? It's just, and it's their money. It's not like you're giving them, you know, the guaranteed benefit. So I, you know, 60 works with me, and I would make that, you know...
Anybody have a problem with that?
Is there, just a quick question for elected officials? Is there an opportunity to contribute out of our...
Additional, into the 457, a separate plan.
It's not as part of the 401?
Yeah, we already, we have a 457 with ICMA already that you can make volunteer contributions to.
Have we compared, I think I asked this question before about the management fees, and my guess is ICMA is very competitive.
Yeah, ICMA is more. I tried to summarize it, and then I sent out an email just yesterday. We got a little bit of good news at the basis points. They're going to lower it for five years. But they, the information, I think I summarized, was that they are higher, they do use licensed brokers, but they also have much more options to choose from on funds, and their yields are better on the more aggressive funds. And so it's, and then the customer service has historically been significantly better. So those, I think you're getting what you pay for there, is, was the summary. And the staff is aware of that, and this is driven by staff interest as well because of the service and option issue.
I'll move to adopt the three ICMA RRC plans, an addenda for the current employees, elected officials, future employees, and future elected officials with retirement age being set at 60.
I have one more question.
Well, we make the motion, keep...
I'll support the motion. Okay, so I have a motion by Treasurer Horning, second by trustee Harper, but you have some additional questions?
Yes, and I discussed this again with James on Monday. It had to do with a military issue. And I'm not really clear on the wording on this and its impact. And it has to do, like, if one of our employees ends up in the military, active in the military, and something happens, either they get disabled or they get, if they die, there's some issues that are not clear, and I'm hoping James could help us with that because we have a choice on how we deal with that. And it almost sounds to me, when I read it, that we're not really supporting the people in the military if we go with the way the default setting is on this plan. I may be wrong with that, but I'm not clear.
Yeah, and I'm afraid I don't have perfect clarity for you. I don't know that it's a matter of not supporting it. Basically, under the HART Act, which is a federal act from a few years ago, you now have this, have a few options within these 401 plans to, one, address somebody who is off on a qualified military service and might get disabled or even die in that service, that will protect the benefit for them that they would have otherwise gotten had they returned to your employ. The option here that we're talking about is under section, would be on page four of the first plan or page 117 of the packet, is under section 66B. And this is another option that's under the HART Act that allows you to basically offer an additional benefit if you were so inclined to, those who are in military service who become disabled or are killed, that you could give additional benefit by giving planned contributions for the time of that service. Whereas you're not obligated to, you're not withholding the benefit from, you're not penalizing from, but you have the option to give extra benefit to. It would, it would incur cost if it were ever to happen, and you may find that to be perfectly acceptable. That's up to you. The default is a no from ICMA unless you were to choose to give an extra benefit.
Historically, I don't think we've ever had an employee that went out...
No, no, it's not.
It's small.
Yeah, small.
So the benefit would...
It's there.
Would start if there was a disability or somebody passed?
Yeah, so...
But if they were out there, they wouldn't be, you're not eligible for that?
They'll get offered more.
So what we already would do under the HART Act is while they're away, if they're reservists or, while they're away on that service, we would still make contributions on a differential between their military pay and what they were earning here on average. And that's already selected. That's the default, and that's, we've, we're already doing that. The HART Act also covers that, should they become disabled or killed in that service, the HART Act says that for all intents and purposes, they are to be considered rehired the day before that incident happened by us, and that way they can get their benefit that they would have as if they were still back in our employment. That, it's not a, really, an issue for, doesn't cause a problem for us or even a cost necessarily. It's just a better benefit to them. What this seems to imply is that in addition, you would also make planned contributions for the time they were out of your employment during that service as a gesture for their service and disability or death.
So it's a difference between the differential. It's like if you're paying, if we're putting in whatever percent, 9%, we're putting in based on their salary, while they're in the service, whatever they're making, we're putting in...
We're already doing that. That's A.
That's it.
We're already doing the differential.
Okay. But we're not putting in what they would be making if they were here working, right?
Oh, right.
It's a lesser amount because they're in the military and we're making it...
Yes.
What this does is make it whole, like they actually worked during this.
As near as I can tell, I believe that's what it is. If this is, I think this is a very unlikely scenario. It is a benefit that you're saying that you would step up and do should it come to that. If there are questions or doubt about it, that we need to have more answers that I can't give you, we may want to postpone or...
Can I change the policy?
You can, and we probably will, will need to at some future point. If we, if we reconsider the percentages that we've talked about, we would have to redo a plan then, and we could get possibly more answers to. You could say yes for now and, or no, and before the next time we were to amend the plan, we could clarify that too.
I don't know. I don't see it as a significant amount of money, but it's just kind of like, you know, the veterans, should that scenario happen, it's kind of a little, bit of a little bonus for them for their, their service to our country. I, it's not a ton of money.
I see it as no money because we've never had a military person ever...
You're right. It might not ever happen. It might not ever happen.
So if we opt for it right now, we will probably review this again?
Right.
Yeah, if we ever revisit the percentages or any of that stuff, we'll have to adopt a new plan, and we could, and even if we didn't, even if we just wanted to change this, whenever, we can amend the plan.
Okay, so it's not like you're driven to stay with it?
Yeah, you're not stuck.
Okay.
So what would the friendly amendment be if they want to include it?
That's your pleasure. She's just asking.
I'm saying, if everybody wants to include it, what would I need to make the friendly amendment saying?
Just to choose yes on 66B.
66B, yes.
The differential that we're paying is the differential that we would, we would have paid less what he's getting from the military.
And we're already doing that, yeah.
Right.
Hmm?
That's, that's part A.
Yes.
So what we would be doing in part B is if there was an incident where he was killed or disabled, we would be making him whole on our program, and he would also get the military thing, so he's getting the extra.
Right.
That's my reading of it, and I don't...
That's the way I read it.
And I don't have a, I'm not perfectly clear on that myself.
Okay, so the friendly amendment would be with the retirement age being set at 60 and saying yes to 66B for military benefit.
Still support.
You still support that?
Yes.
James, did you have another, I thought you said you had a couple more questions or things needed to...
No, I think we covered. There was another question about the, another provision, hopefully. It wasn't necessarily to change it.
Okay. Any other questions from the board members? Comments?
I hate to be the anti-military guy. That's not what I'm trying to do. But again, as far as the township goes, I mean, we're, we're really not out anything, but it is an additional benefit that's being passed out basically at our expense.
No question.
And again, I don't, I mean, it's not like he's not made whole. We're making him whole. We're giving him something extra. And again, I don't see where the township should be, I mean, again, not be...
You're making, yeah.
It doesn't sound good the way I'm saying it. I just look at it from a township's perspective, as we took care of the individual that went into the service like we should have, at a normal township expense.
You're making a decision in advance of a scenario that you think you would want to honor. I can tell you that in my experience, what I've seen most often, probably most all of the time, is that if you had a situation like that, you could make a decision after the fact to, you know, some sort of monetary contribution out of honor and goodwill at that point. And that doesn't necessarily say one's better than the other, but that's most often how I see it. And you often see it, you know, when public safety personnel passes away, sometimes the city or municipality may choose to give some additional contribution, something, some monetary recognition of that, where they were not obligated to, it's not in the contract kind of a thing. This, in this case, you're kind of doing that upfront without necessarily knowing what that incremental cost would be in the off chance it happens.
We don't have anybody currently in the military that's working for us.
No reserve, no reservists, no.
I think we just leave it the way it is, and then we address it when that, when and if that happens. That's my two cents.
That's what I prefer.
But you'd have to, the motioner and the motioner... I just don't understand why, if we don't have anybody here that's affected it, why do we need it? We can always address it when...
On situation.
On a situation. I mean, they could come up.
But we can address it right now and not even have to worry about it in the future. It's just like...
But we're binding another...
It's not costing us anything.
Well, I mean, but you're binding another board to a decision like that, I guess.
They could also undo it too. If they chose to do that.
I know, but why not give them that?
I'm all for situation by situation.
You going to amend your motion?
I will. I'll remove that.
And you support the amended motion?
Yeah.
Anybody else support the motion on the table?
I'll support it.
So we have a new motion on the table that just is the...
Retirement age.
Retirement age of 60. It's supported by trustee Colani. Any other discussion? Being none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay. Motion carries. Thank you. Item number 8C is grant agreement for the new voting equipment that's required by the state of Michigan. Judge Chofu, do you have anything you want to add or little comments so people kind of know what's happening with this? of know what's happening with this?
No, there are basically three agreements in getting the new equipment that's required by the state. We've selected HART and UrCivic as the Livingston County election equipment provider. We need to sign a licensing agreement with HART. Each township has to sign a licensing agreement with HART. When all of the licensing agreements are signed, the county will submit that to the state. The state will then develop the grant agreement for the county that each township would also have to sign. And subsequent to that agreement, we'll know what we get from the state, and then we will have the purchase agreement to actually purchase the equipment from our UrCivic, of which there will be a slight contribution from the township for certain things not covered by the state. So the grant agreement is basically part two of the process for getting the equipment in.
This is all new type of equipment? Pardon? This is all new type of equipment?
It's, yes.
Does it have internet access?
Not at this point in time.
Just questioning, I just want to be sure.
The state of Michigan's a little behind on that, there are other states that are looking at voting by phone and things like that, but it's not anything our state's looking at.
The most recent stuff that came out, I'm just curious, who the vendor was? It's not from an overseas company, and, okay. I will move to authorize the clerk to sign the grant agreement for the purchase of new voting system.
Support.
A motion by Trustee Colani, second by Trustee Harper. Is there any discussion? Be none, all's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, those opposed nay, motion. All right, move on to board reports. We are in our first meeting in June, and we start with Trustee Harper.
Bill report.
Trustee Petrucci.
A couple of things. The teen center is going, we're in the process of applying, and we think we're going to get a grant between $8,000 and $10,000, which would be used for a summer program. We've been talking for the last couple of years to have it open a couple of days a week during the summer. We're looking for two days a week, somewhere between July 11th and August 10th. We think we're going to get the grant, so we're in the process of preparing for that. And my question is, is do we need to do anything with the agreement we have with the township? Do we need to amend it? Do we need to, is there anything that we need to do?
Short answer is no, talked before the meeting, that the agreement as it stands now would allow you to do that. What's in the agreement says that, in exchange for the contribution that the township makes to Hero, that you would operate the teen center, you know, from September to June. That's not exclusive, you can operate through the summer, just that's not what we're contributing for you to do. If you can fund and operate beyond that, you're certainly able to under the agreement.
Okay. And then the last thing I have is that I'll be out of town for the next meeting, I'll be out of town the week of June 19th, so I won't be at the June 20th meeting.
Thank you. Clerk Shofu?
Bill report.
Treasurer Orney?
I will not be at the June 19th, 20th meeting either. My brother will be in town one day from Nebraska on his way through from Niagara Falls, and it's our 42nd anniversary, so it all happens at night. Also, if you haven't been to the farmer's market, this weekend was Flea and Farmers, there was 32 vendors. It was awesome, it's packed, the people are happy, the vendors are happy, Rural King is just, it's amazing. So get down there if you haven't been.
Very good. Trustee Colani?
Just a reminder that the annual Hero Board golf outing, nine-hole golf course, or nine-hole golf outing, be at the Majestic Lake Walden Golf Course on July 16th, beginning at 1:00 PM, or in the afternoon. We hope to have as many golfers as we can, and it's a great time. I think the amount is, is it $40 a person? I'm trying to remember, 40? Yeah, $40 per person. So try and put that on your schedule, and we look forward to having you out there.
Thank you. Trustee Jermaine?
Yes, I have a couple of things to follow up on some of the Hero discussions. I have a question for you, James. Are we now on a three-year township approval, or do we still need an annual agreement every year?
I think last one was a three-year, and I think that carries us through 2018.
Okay. All right, and then, secondly, last week, I did attend a three-day conference in Detroit called the Great Lakes Green Infrastructure. And I think that the time is right, that perhaps the township should reconsider our current engineering.
Standards.
Standards, and perhaps allow greater flexibility, and even promote some of that green infrastructure. As much as we value our lakes and stormwater around here, still, with our current system, a lot of it hits a parking lot and goes right into our surface waters. And while we can't necessarily retrofit a lot of what's already been done, there's the opportunity to improve that for the future. And so I think that's something I'd like to get some feedback from the rest of you on at another time, and then maybe even meet up with some committee or something to work with the planning commission, see what might be appropriate for Heartland Township.
Matt, would you have some thoughts that you could put together that you explored at that meeting, that you could share with the board?
Sure can.
And we can talk about that and put it into a work session?
Sure.
Okay.
I would think that's something the planning commission would be.
Right.
I think it could be a combination of a couple of things, maybe Matt and Bob, and some folks from the planning commission, because ultimately, it would be part of the zoning. And it could be, you know, one of those things that is encouraged, but not mandatory, too. A couple of things, so.
Okay. Anything else, Matt?
No, sir.
I just have a couple of quick things. I'd like to thank everybody that showed up for the parade. I'm not sure, but it seemed like a record crowd to me, especially when you got past the main four corners. There's a lot of people there. And if you haven't had a chance to see the video yet, it's, James, how many hits have they got?
21,000.
21,000 views in less than a week. So that's all good stuff. And then, thanks to Bob for the cleanup day. I wasn't able to attend, but I would assume things went well, and I had a lot of success with that as well. So I know that's something people look forward to every year.
I didn't get around to it this year, but are we still doing any type of hazardous waste removal as well?
The county does that, we call it.
We just did it the one year.
Yeah.
Just that one year?
Yeah.
But the county, does the county?
The county does three a year.
Just three a year, but they, they're part of their solid waste management. They are, you know, they would encourage, if we can set up something, they will help facilitate that, because that improves their overall solid waste plan.
They always have the option, very expensive and very labor-intensive.
Okay. Something maybe we could consider.
Maybe get a Boyce County group?
Yeah.
I'll pull that together.
Okay. If there's nothing else from the board?
Well, I will quickly add to that discussion, that, and I'm not even sure if the rest of you are aware of this, but I was appointed by the Livingston County Board of Directors to be a township representative on the Livingston County Board of Solid Waste. So I attend meetings there approximately two to three times a year. And so if you have concerns or questions in that regard, I'd be happy to relay them on to the director and the rest of the board members.
Perhaps that's something we could do with some of our surrounding townships, and work together, is maybe offset some of that cost, so. All right, thanks. If there's nothing else this evening, take a brief recess, and we'll convene with our work session.